The committee would like to welcome the audience and thank you for attending. Viewers may watch board committee meetings online at TCAPS.net/Board. Recorded meetings may be viewed on demand at the same address. There is no public comment. And we'll move on to procedural items, which is the draft meeting minutes. Are there any changes to the draft meeting minutes? Hearing none, there remain as posted. And then we'll move on to the agenda review for both the September 9th and September 23rd meetings.
Okay, so September 9th, we have our standard call to order pledge, the review of the agenda, recognition, two really cool ones this month. MEMS outstanding principal award for our region with Brian Kay. And then we have the Michigan Art Education Association Middle Level Art Educator of the Year. And so we'll be able to have the opportunity to recognize both of them. Excited about that. Then we will have our public comment number one legislative update, which is not really anything new. District highlights. And then still working on the USDA TCOP presentation. However, I will tell you, I got an email about two hours ago from right now, TCOP is saying their lawyer is saying for some reason they don't have the ability to do the USDA program. But they're trying to work to see if maybe there's something that's maybe there is maybe one still possibility. They're working on the next week and said they'd get back with me. So I don't know if we just maybe want to scratch that for now or just an update. Maybe change it from that to update, presentation to update.
Well, we could just put pending after it, so it's on the agenda, but it's kind of noted that it may or may not occur.
That's what you want to do it, so okay, we can do that. Which is disappointing, and I'm still going to work that because everything in my head should be right.
I wonder why they can't figure out how to get anyone to take it.
I just got it in two hours. I mean, it's rural electorate, and I know we're, because they're rural, I like all of it, so anyway. So then we will have our report outs of our curriculum committee and exec committee. We did not have finance this month. We will report out on the MASB summer conference from board member Ballinger. And then we will have board office hours as well by trustee Ballinger. In September, we'll be attending trustee Raymond. We'll have our consent agenda, which does have a field trip on there as well. We have the district course catalog that was approved by the curriculum committee. And then meeting minutes. We have the school safety update certification of board of education voting delegates for the MASB assembly, inter-district open enrollment, the birth of boss property update, and board policy discussion. There is one thing that helped me out. Where is the League of Innovative Schools?
I'm at the conferences.
It is, okay, thank you, all right, I didn't see that, thank you. All right, and so we will then, again, we have a certification for the board of education voting delegates for the MASB assembly, which we do each year. Inter-district open enrollment, this is an ISD agreement amongst the five county districts. We do not participate in out of ISD school of choice under section 105 and 105c. So we do have to approve this plan to opt out of that state plan. And then a berth of boss property update, which I'll tell you, I do have a purchase agreement. But I don't have a state of use of the building yet. Scott already, we talked yesterday, is working on that. So still in negotiations, and I expect still will be, you know, at this point going up. But we're getting closer, little by little. And then board policy discussion to finish out the policies. And our second public comment are closing remarks and adjournments.
Is there a time limit on the board policy discussion?
That's up to you.
No, I mean, we, oh, on this one? I mean, I think it depends how close, we did really well last time.
Yeah, we're close.
I feel like we can probably do it in a similar session, timing. And if not, we could always push it to the following meeting because that was kind of where we thought it would be done, to potentially use that.
Or if you had time in the study session at the end, you could do a little bit more if you had to.
I mean, I think depending, it's a relatively, it's a lighter agenda, so I think we should have plenty of time.
I believe if I counted, there's between eight and 10 policies yet to discuss, and I don't think there's going to be a lot of contention based on what was suggested.
I thought it was a little more than that, but wasn't more?
Of the ones that they like brought forward that they wanted to change.
There was only eight or 10 left.
I think so.
Something else we updated, close to 15.
Yeah, so I think we should be able to have a reasonable and be done, but even if not, we have a couple of meetings because I think we're progressing nicely, so. But I mean, maybe that is to your point, because I did want to add, we've got to determine the subject of the study session in October. So maybe we should add that as item E rather than before we leave board policy discussion till the end. E will be the study, so just basically identifying the subject of the study session in October. And I think that's the only change right now. I know there was a couple of other potential ones, but I don't think we're either don't need them or we're not ready to add them. Okay.
All right, and then we do have the study session of September 23rd. Our call to order the pledge, review of the agenda, our first public comment, consent right now that has meeting minutes. We will have our study session for the high school student achievement. And we will have representatives from all three high schools here for that plan. I know they're ready to go, they got their plan and excited to do that. We'll have our second public comment, our board president closing remarks and adjournment for that meeting. And then as I continue to go with the agenda for this meeting, we do have in there the League of Innovative Schools. You may remember, we're one of only two districts in the state of Michigan that are part of the League of Innovative Schools. The fall convening is here in late September. We do have grant dollars in our Title II fund for me to be able to participate in that. You might remember, we've gotten quite a bit of resources from this and a lot of exposure to many different programs and opportunities. So I'm requesting to be able to do that, go to that, that professional development. And right now it's on consent agenda unless you have any reasons to move it.
Anybody going with you?
No, this is actually for the first time they've only invited superintendents only. First time they've done it, so yeah.
Wait, was it?
Lindsay Unified and just outside of Fresno, California, actually Visalia, California. So Lindsay Unified is one of the first districts in the country that went entirely competency based. And it's a relatively school with quite a bit of poverty. And it's really had some great academic gains from it. So really interested to go visit the school and see that work and talk to the administration and see how that might work for us.
And then, so next is informational items, so human resources.
Thank you. Starting off with our staffing update, I don't want to put this out to the universe and curse myself, but at this point, we are completely staffed at the elementary level. Secondary, we are still looking for middle school science and high school special education. When we get this late in the year, we are, you know, doing Plan Bs in the event that we cannot find qualified candidates. But if there are individuals out there, we would love to talk to you about joining our team. We're completing the process or hiring process for administrative vacancies that were created as a result of the promotion of both Ben Berger and Ryan Ranger. And as well as our director of curriculum, which is a replacement for the vacancies created by the executive director of innovative programs and executive director of school improvements, kind of combining those into the one director position. So we'll be finalizing that, getting that information out to you as soon as possible. Still have a number of support vacancies that we're looking for. Obviously, we know living in this area, childcare is something that our families need, our staff needs. And we have the facilities and the ability to do our extended day programs for families, but we need to be able to staff those. So if there's anyone interested in working in those programs, certainly provide, be able to extend our services to the community. Looking for some junior kindergarten aides, starting out, those are temporary positions, which could turn permanent for the rest of the school year, based on the number, class size numbers in junior kindergarten. A variety of other instructional aides, and as usual, we're still looking for great bus drivers and aides. So those positions that we've talked about, the CBL funded by the district, paid training opportunities, referral bonuses for any staff members who refers to our support groups, and also signup bonuses for our various hourly staff positions. So those are all posted on the website. We will continue to do our open interview process here at Glen Loomis Administration Building. Those are on Wednesdays, every other week, Wednesdays. Our first one coming up here soon is on September 11th from 8:00 to 10:00 in the morning. Then September 25th from 3:00 to 5:00, October 9th from 8:00 to 10:00, and then October 25th from 3:00 to 5:00. So moving on, I think we already touched on this before, sorry, any questions on the staffing?
Nope.
All right, and then moving on to the board policy, I think we've talked about that. I'm sure she's, I think we made a lot of great progress. We have updated, or I should say Kendall has updated all of the policies to reflect the changes that the board agreed to at the September, or I'm sorry, at the August 12th board meeting. And including some revisions to the medication, adding over the counter language to that and all the other just procedural things that people had asked be included. And so we will update and give you copies of those updated policies before the next board meeting. And then hopefully we'll get through the remainder of them and be set for adoption soon thereafter.
Yep, it was definitely, I think we're getting through them. And if there's anything that really does hold up, obviously, we can always adopt and then come back and just set that for the general meeting.
Absolutely, especially when there are revisions to policies, those go on the consent agenda, they're pretty, they're pretty simple. Certainly have dialogue around those here at this committee meeting as well.
Anything else on HR? Then we will go on to communication update, defer to Ginger Smith.
Thank you, yeah, so we've got some exciting, I'm a huge data kind of girl, so when I have data to share, I'm always kind of excited about it. And we are in the last week right now of our Sunshine Bus. The Sunshine Bus will conclude on Friday, so although the numbers are still lacking for adding in the numbers for this week, I do want to share with you the total thus far for what we have distributed through the Sunshine Bus. In terms of bags of food, knowing that each, each bag of food is, is not a meal, it's like a week's worth of meal. And then new to the program this year, we did an additional bag per family. And that was more substantial items, such as a jar of peanut butter, a loaf of bread, box of pasta, that type of thing, to encourage a more substantial meal to have as a family. And we also did some fresh fruit this year and did some more perishable items to just kind of round out the healthiness factor, I guess you could say, of what we're providing. So we did just under 3,000 bags of food. We are currently at 2,890 bags. By comparison, last year, our overall total was 1,860. So it's, it's very exciting to know that we've got an increase of over 1,000 bags of food this summer that we are sharing out with our community. In terms of the basic needs, that is a new thing that we added in this summer as well. And we gave out 3,338 items thus far. The most needed and requested items, we gave out 655 toothbrushes. And then followed by deodorant, toothpaste, and body wash. So that was an extremely successful program. I'm beyond thankful for our bus drivers, Terry and Tim, who did a fantastic job of really getting to know the families and, and creating that connection throughout our community. And of course, for our partnership with the Father Fred Foundation, for all the work they did and for all their volunteers putting those bags of food together. And for our SSN team for providing all the basic needs on the bus every week. Also for our SSN, we just had last Thursday and Friday, our pop-up shop. If you remember, last year during spring break, we had our very first pop-up shop. So this time, we did it with the theme of back to school. We had a lot of brand new clothes and a lot of gently used clothing items. We had 85 students who either came by appointment and some who just did a walk-in when they were visiting Glen Loomis for their backpack pickup through the Rotary event. So we also had 45 additional students who were unable to attend, but reached out to us and packages were provided for them. The next pop-up shop will be October 3 and 4. And we will host that here to promote the distribution of all the winter gear before winter hits. So snow pants, boots, mittens, all that good stuff. So more will be coming up soon as we announce that, but just wanted to put that one on your radar as well. Finally, I also want to just touch real quick on our McKinney-Vento population with that. Every year, we do need to clear out our roster of students who are identified, and then we start over. That is just part of how the process works with the state. And through these events that we've done this summer, we have already been able to identify 48 students. So the benefit to that is that we can identify them right away and provide services immediately. So grateful for Tyson Birch and his transportation team because they are now able to help us get those kids to school on day one, whereas otherwise, we might not see them until we have identified them later on into the school week and then plan for transportation. So very grateful for all the help around the district in identifying these students early. And hopefully, we'll even be able to identify a couple more in the next two days to ensure that we have as many students here on day one as possible.
Ginger, are those new students that are identified?
Not necessarily.
Okay, okay.
The slate clears and then we up.
Got it.
I'm sure some are.
Okay.
And, and some are not.
Okay.
So it's basically student, if, when we had our pop-up shop, we had their questionnaire when they first checked in.
Bless you.
Thanks. And through that questionnaire, we could then identify them and then assist with assistance right away. So.
I saw a couple of postings online, is, are all the backpacks now gone?
I believe they were, the remaining backpacks were distributed to the buildings at the building level. So I do know the high schools did receive a handful each. I do not know if they are gone, but they received them in time for the orientation dates. So my guess is if they're not gone, it's probably getting to be slim pickings, but yeah, they did, they did get those all pushed out.
At curriculum, somebody.
I thought the high school ones were all gone, I thought they said.
Were gone, yeah.
I thought there was still some elementary in Blair and Traverse Heights, every kid got one.
Blair and Traverse Heights, yes, every child will have one. Yeah, so. And then the next thing, I just want to provide a quick update on Safe Routes to School. I know that's an important topic for many of the families who are in the vicinity of West Middle School and TCAPS Montessori. And we are working that grant through West Middle School. And so Kristin Studeman did submit the request for consideration of that grant. I have met with our liaison with Safe Routes to School, and we have scheduled the team kickoff meeting for September 12. That will just be a handful of the people that will be part of the team. But attending that meeting will be Chuck Korn and then his planning director, our coordinator, and then a few, couple other people, we've got Fern Spence, who's asking to be a part of that group as well, and then myself. And then I'm also scheduled for a full day of training on September 19 regarding the application process. So that'll be, that'll be a fun, fun day. So anyway, so that's where we're at with that, and that'll be probably quite an extensive and longer grant process than, than many of the others. So we'll see how long it takes us to cross all the Ts and dot all the Is on that one. That's where we're at, that's all I have.
All right, any other question?
I, yeah, I do have another item, and I'm seeing, especially with Erica here now, I think it's really timely because I forgot it, but she asked for it, so it's good. So we do have in your packet, I asked Connie to put together a policy for naming rights for facilities. You'll remember, under Niola, we had one, and so she's been able to work to draft one under what we're doing now with TRUEN with that. So you might remember that we had a request, just as we were kind of getting started in the conversation, of a possibility of naming the facility, the tennis facility at Central High School for a retired coach. At that time, we had said no, but we'll probably take a look more at it when we review policies and where that is. Lately, we've had another request from two individuals, I know that also contacted Erica. So Erica asked me to put this on the agenda for this, for consideration for the board, the full board meeting. Again, it kind of, you know, really says, the key term in it is the board shall refrain from naming facilities or portions of facilities after individuals. Should the board choose to, which the board still can though, consider naming for an individual, it shall follow the steps as noted above, which are there. So board has the ability to, policy is kind of very stringent on it, but totally you guys' purview of how you want to move forward with that.
And Dr. Nerk, can I mention too, this is the Niola language. So they did not have a corresponding one for TRUEN, so we put it over into the TRUEN packet. But, so this gives an opportunity at the next meeting, if you wanted to revise this policy, we could certainly do so before they were adopted. This was just our previous.
Got it, yeah. So this has not been added, or we're discussing here to add it to the next agenda?
That is correct.
Okay, okay.
I mean, you know, policy for two, but then there's also the case of you have an individual, a specific request.
Yeah.
So, you know, I think, you know, I would put this just prior in the policy element. The question is, is how do you want to go about the specific request? It's kind of a little bit intertwined.
Yeah.
You know, and that's kind of what we set at the table when this happened. So, you know, I, I kind of leave it to you guys', you know, purview of how you might want to go about. You know, this is kind of, to me, an easy, you know, adopt policy. The question is just, what do you want to do with that ask?
Maybe we can just put it. I'm trying to figure out, it's always awkward to have a, I don't like to have discussion of policies when you do one person, and that usually leads to a weird policy that's bad for everything.
I mean, I think you just put it after your policy discussion.
Yeah, that's probably the easiest way.
And make sure you hit this one.
And we can bring it up in the.
And make sure you hit this policy, you know, and everybody might be just good with it already, I don't know.
Yeah, exactly.
But I think do that, and then you're just going to have to add that after your last, you know, your last point. Procedurally, I'd tell you a way, now you do it.
Okay, that's fine. So then can we add to make sure we cover that? Can we make sure we cover that in the board policy discussion? And then we'll add item.
So Stacy, make sure you work with Connie to forward that to the full board.
P.
It'll be after.
F, and then G, I guess we'll have it after, that'll be the last item. So that would be item G.
Which will be Central High School Tennis Facility Naming.
And I also think, I mean, this is naming of new facilities. It specifically talks about when construction of a new school facility is approved.
That was part of the reason why we wanted to look at it. It didn't exactly meet, what about an older facility or remodeled, you know, remodeled? This was the point.
Right.
That's why it was kind of like, we don't know, but we definitely know this policy doesn't fit any of it.
Right.
So we kicked it down the, you know, the road until we got to the policy, you know, and then there. That's why I think you got to adjust the policy.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then make a decision off of the new policy.
We may not be able to finalize anything anyway until we've talked to the policies, depending what we adopt the policy to.
That's true, we could still have a discussion though.
We can have a discussion.
And they're, and they're willing to think, they're very patient, they have been, so, you know, if it took them to the next month whatsoever.
We're, we're closing in anyway, so.
Yeah.
It may be a quick discussion that we kick down past the things, but.
Okay, perfect, so we'll add it, this will be on the, okay. We'll make sure everyone has.
Mr. Grant Parsons, the last one that called me, he understood that that's the process, and he was perfectly right.
Yeah.
My general gut is that we would do it after we're done with all the policies, adopting them, but we can have the, start having the discussion.
So this will be forwarded to you and, you know, any additional policies for discussion that we'll add?
And like I said, I think at this point, it needs to come to the table because we already know there's, it, it has some revision need.
Okay. Any, any other items or comment questions on communications? Obviously fantastic news, thank you for the work and getting all of those, everything distributed, that's amazing. And then, yeah, that's it. I've noticed Student Support Networks being noted a few times as well, is receiving some community support. So appreciate the community for that, and I know it's a very important program. Any other items? All right, with that, the next board executive committee meeting is Thursday, October 10th at 4:00 PM in this room. And with that, I adjourn the meeting, thanks. And with that, I adjourn the meeting. Thanks.